You call this meeting to order and we'll start with a roll call, please.
Supervisor Flores?
Here.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer? Supervisor Baines?
Present.
Okay, everyone's present. We're going to kind of go away from the norm here as we have to have a temporary election for a temporary chair before we get the meeting started. So we're going to elect a chair and at this time I'd call for nominations.
I nominate Supervisor Flores.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. I'm now the temporary chair for the remainder of this portion of the meeting. Thank you. And with that, we're going to move on to the invocation and the pledge. Please remain standing. And our invocation is going to be led by Pastor Darrell Chambers from Emmanuel Faith Center, Worship Center.
Heavenly Father and our God, we come to you this evening, asking you to continue to do what you have done for this county. How you have blessed us from line to line. Have you expanded our territory? So Father God, we're asking that you protect us from the floods and the fires and that you, Father God, would give the county the resources it needs to continue to do what it's doing, Father God. We thank you, Father God, that you have blessed us with so many diverse people in this county, Father God, and diverse landscape and diverse opportunities, Father God. So we ask that you continue to bless us for the year 2025, Father God. We look back over 2024 and see that we have been blessed and we continue to thank you for all of your many blessings. And we know that we have a great and prosperous future ahead in this county, Father God, because you have established wise counsel here, Father God. So we thank you and we ask that you would just continue to do what you have done for this county, Father God, that you would bless it all the way from Greeley downtown to Thomas, Father God, that you would keep us, Father God, at us as the point of the spirit, Father God, for leading the rest of this region. And we give you the glory, the honor, and the praise, and we thank you. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. And at this time, I'll ask former Supervisor Matt Conant to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. We'd like to have a moment of silence for Andrew and Wesley Cornet, who lost their lives in the after bay, and for the people who have lost their lives in the LA fire. So let's honor them with a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. And at this time, we're going to call up Donna Johnson to swear in the newly elected officials. Hi, Donna. You're already up.
Hello. Temporary Chair Flores. I just want to give everybody a little bit of the history of the oath so everybody understands what the origin of the oath is and the oath and what the words are and the meaning behind the oath when the individuals that are coming here today are being sworn in. So the oath of office, as we know today, has withstood the test of time. The words have gone through many, many transformations over that time, but the significance placed upon the founding fathers has remained the same. The oaths date back to ancient Rome, where soldiers pledged loyalties to a specific general for a specific campaign. By 100 B.C., Rome had established a professional military and the oath became effective for a soldier's 20-year service term. In 1620, when the Mayflower landed, the pilgrims established the Mayflower Compact, which served as an oath, a covenant, and a constitution, and then pledged allegiance to King James, agreeing to work together for their betterment and preservation. We all know how that went. When the founding fathers were developing the oath of office for U.S. and military civil officers, they had serious concerns about pledging allegiance to any specific person. Therefore, then-General George Washington required all officers to take and subscribe to an oath renouncing King George III and supporting again instead the United States. In 1789, the First Statute of the United States created an act to regulate the time and manner of when that oath is given. Throughout history, many pieces of legislation addressed the changes to the oath, changing the wording as well as its application. The most recent version you're going to hear shortly was adopted in Congress in July of 1868. Prior to statehood, California adopted the oath within its constitution. So for those of you that are going to be taking the oath here in a moment, the oath you're going to take has certain moral implications regarding your actions as well as whether the general public, all of you out there, expect in the execution of them taking their office. It's so much more than mere words. It provides the necessary foundation for leadership decisions. The oath requires officers to support and defend the Constitution. The words "and" defend were added to the original oath in 1862 during the Civil War, when defense and preservation of the nation was so vital. Against all enemies, foreign and domestic, was a direct result of the Civil War, to address the possibility of Union soldiers joining the Confederacy, most notably the forces commanded by General Lee. People who had previously sworn allegiance to the United States were actually now fighting against it. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to, faith and allegiance wording goes back to at least 1606, when King James required an oath from everyone leaving to go to America to work in the Virginia Company. That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion also originated during the Civil War. Congress and President Abraham Lincoln added this passage to ensure that soldiers not defect by expanding the oath in attempt to guarantee their loyalty. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter originated from an additional oath required of the Secretary of the Senate and the Clerk of the House of Representatives, and that was added to the standard oath in 1862. So core values expressed by each phrase are: I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States means service before self, against all enemies, foreign and domestic, personal courage and loyalty. I take this obligation without mental reservation or purpose of evasion, integrity and honor. I will well faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter, excellence in all we do, a commitment to duty, and respect for the rights of others. So as you can see, the oath of office is so much more than just a mere formality that adds to the pageantry of this investiture ceremony. It is a statement to perform to the best of one's ability, a sense of honor, and acknowledgement of the consequences of failing to live up to one's word. I would like at this point to invite Supervisor Baines, Supervisor Boone, and Supervisor Stevens, along with newly appointed Assessor Scriven, to the front while I will administer the oath of office. All right, all photographers in the room, you ready? Okay, would you all please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you're about to enter? Congratulations to all of you. I'd like to present you I'd like to present you all with your certificates of election and of appointment. And then if you all want to take a photo with that. And then at this point, I would like each one of your loved ones with county pin to come on up and we will put the county pin on you. So at this point, each one of them is going to be given the Sutter County pin affixed upon their lapel, and hopefully no stabbing occurs. No blood is drawn. And if all of you can stay up here for just a moment, turn around, we'll get your pictures. And again, congratulations to all of you.
Thank you, Donna. Okay, awesome. Welcome, gentlemen. And at this time, I'd actually have time for you to make comments. So I would ask Supervisor Baines first to have comments, and then we'll have Supervisor Boone, followed by Supervisor Stevens.
All right, I'd like to thank my family, friends, and neighbors for their unwavering support. Being given the opportunity to serve as your supervisor for another term is an incredible honor, one I do not take lightly. We've accomplished a lot in the last four years. Along the way, I've learned many lessons, but perhaps the most important has been recognizing how truly blessed we are to have an exceptional team of staff here in Sutter County. Their dedication and professionalism are the backbone of what makes our community strong. As a lifelong resident of District Four, serving as your voice at the dais has been a privilege. I carry the immense responsibility of this role with humility and resolve, always striving to represent you with professionalism, integrity, honesty, and transparency. I promise to continue advocating for all residents of Sutter County. I will listen, engage, and ensure your voices are heard. Thank you for trusting me with this responsibility. I am honored and humbled to serve you, and I look forward to what we will achieve together in upcoming years. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Baines and Supervisor Boone.
Yes, first of all, I want to tell everyone, thank you for coming out today. It's a big honor to be here, and you don't know how lucky I am to be in this position today. It really means the world to me. It took me a couple of shots to get here, and we finally made it. But first and foremost, I want to thank the Lord and Savior for the blessings that He's brought to me, brought me here today. And I'm deeply grateful for my sisters, Lisa Boone Harris, Pam Boone Teasdale, and their families and their unwavering love and support. Your support means everything to me. I wouldn't be standing here today without you. And of course, my mother and father, Keith and Dorothy Boone. Their direction led me to this position years ago, back when my mother used to tell me I talked way too much. I want to also recognize Kerry Hauck of Sapphire Marketing. Kerry's unwavering expertise and dedication to me along the way, and Lord knows, I was pretty stubborn, and she was always there to try to keep me back in check. And I really appreciate all of her help. It means a lot, and we have a shared love for Sutter County so that our goals are the same at the end of the day. So as I begin this journey, I do a solemn promise that every day I'll pray for our county, for its people, for the wisdom to make the right decisions for our future. I'm humbled by the trust placed in me by the voters of District One, and I'm committed to serving every resident of Sutter County with integrity, transparency, and care. Together, I believe we can honor our shared values, face challenges head-on, and ensure that Sutter County remains a place where we're all proud to call home. Thank you, and may God continue to bless Sutter County.
Thank you Supervisor Boone and Supervisor Stevens.
This is hard following those two. Anyway, first of all, I want to start off by thanking the service Matt Conan has done for this past eight years. Leadership is hard. It's a challenge, and he has shown, you know, great leadership these last eight years. So I do want to recognize Matt for that. I also, since I've been at it for a few weeks now, I also want to thank the staff for welcoming me because, you know, change is hard and people come in and people go, but everybody that works at Sutter County and that I've been exposed to has been more than welcoming and very supportive of what I've been up to the last couple of weeks. So thank you, staff and the people of Sutter County. Now, I'd like to thank my family. My wife, Cherie, Megan, my son-in-law Curtis, and Megan and Madeline. You know, we all take this stuff on and it becomes about us, but there's a lot of other individuals involved. And so thank you to my family, my supporters, the people who've walked the streets with me, the people who've done fundraisers for me and done a lot to help me get elected. I thank them also. I can't tell you how valuable and what I feel about the relationships I have with everyone that I know. And then, I did the family. I think that's pretty much it. I'm not a big talker, so, but I do appreciate everybody and I want to, well, I did have one other point I wanted to make. I'm really a big person about relationships. I want to develop relationships with people and voters in this county and outside this county, and hopefully by building those relationships, we can make a better county and a stronger county. So I just really look forward to serving you. Thank you.
Those are their business cards for building those relationships. They're ready, so. Thank you for those comments, gentlemen, and I look forward to continuing serving with you and welcome the board, to the Board of Supervisors, and welcome back, Supervisor Baines. Let's now move on to the election of the Chair, Vice Chair, and the Chair pro, I'm going to say this incorrectly.
Excuse me, Chair, before we do that, can we please do an amended roll call?
Oh, sorry. Okay, so we have an amended roll call now because we have new members on the board. So yes, please do the amended roll call.
Supervisor Boone. Supervisor Flores.
Present.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer.
Here.
Supervisor Baines.
Present.
Supervisor Stevens.
Okay, so the amended roll call has been called. We're all here. So let's now move on to the elections and I'll call for nominations for Chairman.
I nominate Supervisor Flores for Chair.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no opposition. Therefore Supervisor Flores is the Chair. Kind of odd. Thank you, yeah.
This is a little different. So it's been my honor and privilege to serve as your supervisor for District Five the last eight years. And last year I was Chairman. And so we didn't have election of the Chairman until just a few seconds ago. So we couldn't really pass over the gavel until this point now. So it's my honor and privilege to present the gavel and the plaque to Dan Flores, who I know will do a fantastic job working and representing the county in this upcoming year. Congratulations, Dan, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt.
For those of you who weren't here at our last meeting, we had really moments to say goodbye and to cherish those moments that we served. And Matt served, we had the honor of serving with Matt for eight years. And as Supervisor Stevens, you know, mentioned, he was very dedicated to the county and he led from his heart, and he did a great job. And I'm sure Supervisor Stevens is going to feel your shoes very well, but thank you, Matt. Can we give him another round of applause? My comments are, I'd really like just to thank you all from the bottom of my heart for the honor of serving as your Chairman. I want to start by welcoming our new members, Supervisor Stevens and Supervisor Boone, and then welcoming back Supervisor Baines. Congratulations and welcome to the board. Together, you know, we face challenges ahead, but I feel confident that by working as a team, that we're going to be able to turn these challenges into great opportunities for the county. And this will lead to great progress for our county as well. Our focus does remain steadfast, and that's supporting the mission of making the county a better place to live, work, play, and raise our families. Success in Sutter is built, though, on collaboration. It's great to see some city council members here tonight, and that collaboration really means a lot to us continuing forward. It depends on the service and our shared commitment to public safety and our community as a whole. So let's embrace, for us, a love-all, serve-all mindset as we lead with gratitude and humility and purpose. And together, we can achieve great things for and with you guys, the people of Sutter County. So let's make 2025 the best year ever. Thank you. Okay, now we need to nominate a Vice Chair.
Do you have a Chair?
Yes.
I moved appoint Supervisor Ziegemeyer as Vice Chair.
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay, we have a second by Supervisor Boone. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposition? There being none, Supervisor Ziegemeyer, you're now the Vice Chair. Congratulations.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I'd like to now have comments from Supervisor Ziegemeyer.
Through the Chair.
Vice Chair Ziegemeyer, sorry.
Yeah. When you first become a supervisor, you get used to saying "through the Chair" quite a bit. So I just want to thank my family, start out with my family first of all. Serving as your supervisor, your family serves alongside you, and it's a huge deal what they go through, not just what you go through. I couldn't do this without the support from my wife and my four kids and my brothers and sisters and mother-in-law and so forth. I just have an amazing family and I'm extremely grateful for them. We have an amazing staff here at Sutter County. We have amazing supervisors. And the love that these guys show behind the scenes is unreal, unreal. This is not just a meeting type of job. This is your phone rings at any time of the day, any time of the night, they have questions. And I love serving with these guys. You know, I've seen what Jeff has done throughout the community throughout all these years with Say Love and so forth, and Jeff Boone, and what he does for the city of Live Oak there. And it's amazing, and I'm honored to serve alongside you guys. Congratulations Supervisor Baines on getting sworn in for another four. Excited to work with you again. Love this group. I love our staff. We have an amazing staff. We really do. They do so much with so little. It would blow you away. This is truly a dream team of staff. We're lucky to have them here in Sutter County, and I'm excited for the future. A lot of good things. We've been working on a lot of great things, and we'll see them come to fruition and so forth. But thank you for having us. I look forward to serving as the Vice Chair. Thank you.
And before we move on to the election of our Vice Chair pro tem, how do you say pro tempore? Do you say pro tempore or pro? Pro tempore. Okay, we'll go with that. We have some special guests that I'd like to recognize that are here today as well. I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize my wife, Tanya, first for putting up with me for the last 10 years of serving for the county, but my lovely wife, Tanya. Thank you. And my son Nate, who's in the back with the baseball cap. So there he is. Hi, Nate. But I'd like to also introduce Yuba City Councilman Mark Boomgarden. Yuba City Councilman Wade Kirchner. Former Yuba City Mayor Cash Gill. Former City Councilman Manny Cardoza. Former Yuba County Supervisor John Nicoletti. Live Oak City Councilmember Ashley Hernandez. Also from Live Oak, Bob Wooton. And Nancy Santana as well. I'd also like to introduce the Chamber CEO, Janelle Willis. And Blue Zones Executive Director, Marnie Sanders. Welcome, everybody. With that, we'd like to move on to the election of the pro tempore. So if I missed anybody, there's a special presentation coming up too. We'll be recognizing a couple of people. But first, starting with the pro tempore election, I would call for nominations, please. Want to nominate? We need to nominate a person, so. Through the Chair.
Through the Chair, only, Carmains.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, we have a first by Supervisor Ziegemeyer and a second by Supervisor Stevens. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, congratulations. Congratulations Supervisor Baines. All right, great job. Okay, with that, we have special presentations. And at this time, I'd like to call up Fiona Ma. And before we do that, let me just say Barbara Levake is also here. I didn't see you hiding back there. So we served with Barbara. Barbara served on the Sutter County Board of Supervisors, and we sit by each other and pass notes. But welcome, Barbara. Thank you. And Fiona, come on up. I know you have a special presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm Fiona Ma, California State Treasurer. But I did start my political career on the San Francisco Board of Supervisors back in 2002. So everything that you all talked about, about collaboration, about sacrifice by your family, about leadership, about talking and not talking that much, and through the Chair, is bringing back memories. Then I served in the State Assembly, where I met former Supervisor Barbara Levake, when she, she still is with California Women for Ag. And I served on the Ag Committee for four years. Then I served as your friendly tax collector on the State Board of Equalization. Nobody really liked to call me, but now as your State Treasurer, I have all the money. So I oversee about $3.7 trillion. I manage the surplus funds. I issue all the bonds and fund and finance affordable housing, hospitals, schools, public transportation, small businesses, four savings programs. And so I look forward to working with your elected leaders here today. I know there are probably many projects that you all want some funding for, so please call me.
We will.
I did bring some resource guides for businesses and families that I have out there, but it's also on my website. If you go to my website, there's resource guides, and we update it frequently to make sure that we are getting out the resources that are available through the federal, state, local governments, and the private sector. So today is my honor to be here to present a certificate to the new members. I know that Supervisor Baines has been reelected, but I just wanted to present a certificate to your Board Member Stevens, as well as Board Member Boone, congratulating you all on your long journey here, but the long journey ahead. As elected leaders, we tend to get blamed for everything. And so we have many sleepless nights, but serving as an elected official is a true honor. It is going to take years out of your life
So true.
And your family's life, but know that you will be serving your community. And I know that you will both do an amazing job, so congratulations.
Thank you for coming by, Fiona, and hopefully that won't be the last time we see you this year. Okay, take care. We'll see you soon. We'll be calling you about the money you offered. Thank you. Bye-bye, Barbara. Thanks for coming, too. Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public will be allowed to address the board on items of interest of the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors. State law provides no discussion or action may be taken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Clerk, do we have?
We do. We have five public comments. The first is Tina Hessong.
Okay. Hi, Tina.
Good afternoon. Election season is finally over, and the election's industrial complex did not disappoint. You were probably thinking that if Trump won the election, it would shut us up. Boy, were you wrong. We will continue to stand and fight for elections that are void of blatant fraud and malfeasance. The 2024 election was fraudulent, just like every election since we began using computers to count for us. Thanks to the new California State Numbers Team, we present the true count of the 2024 presidential election nationwide. Trump actually, the reported margin that is certified was that he won by 2,284,316 votes. After the audit of the actual one-to-one true count vote, without the machines, the Trump margin was 34,113,419 votes. We got out our calculators, and that is a 31,829 and 103 vote difference. That's a lot of votes that were given to Kamala Harris for people that voted for Trump. Thirty-two, almost 32 million people. We will never be quiet about those numbers. Not only is the election system in the state of California reporting false numbers, the Finance Department is following suit. According to Chris Street of the Mountain Top Times in his January 2, 2025 article, the California State Auditor issues qualified 2023 internal financial statements. And my colleague will finish. Is she next? She's next?
Janet Johnson?
I'm not touching anything, so I guess this is on. I'm Janet Johnson, a Sutter County resident for probably 70 of my 79 years. Grant Parks noticed with Governor Newsom and legislator leaders that the internal control and compliance audit report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2023 issued a qualified opinion and cannot be relied upon as true and correct. The report identified six deficiencies in internal control over financial reporting that are considered to be material weaknesses, and eight other deficiencies that are considered to be significant. Deficiencies in the state's internal control system could adversely affect its ability to provide accurate and timely financial information. Many consider this to be the final nail in the coffin of California's financial problems. Have you heard this news, or that California's budget is running at a negative 26% deficit? Of course not. If you did, you would understand the recent Southern California fire outbreak. It's called disaster capitalism, a way to soak money from the federal government to cover the massive deficit in the state's budget. It's horrifying to think of the people's lives that have been destroyed in the process. Equality means that the million-dollar home should receive the same $750 fee alone that the homes in West North Carolina received. Sounds like the perfect time for new California state to help pull California out of its own mess.
Public speaker?
John Nicoletti.
Hello, John.
Good afternoon, Board. Just wanted to say thank you from all of the staff at Habitat for Humanity. Early on in a process of trying to help people through COVID and then getting forward and getting lives put back together, the board and the staff in the county of Sutter joined with Habitat to produce Harmony Village. And I just want to report that since that time, several people have restored with their families, moved back with their families and rejoined, got healthy again. Many have, for the first time, got employment and felt like they could and deliver on that. I think the project is an absolute success, and from the commitment that Sutter County made, the next time that we applied in this region, the state had us divvy up $100 million between Oakland, San Francisco, San Diego, San Francisco County, LA County. And this county had the eye of the state, and we were the second-largest recipient of grant funds out of that 100 million. And so it says a lot when a community this size shows that it delivers for its residents. And we're just looking forward to this next four years to continue with partnership and support. And really, also very grateful to see Pastor Darrell here, because for you new guys, there's Martin to King March on Saturday at 10 o'clock in front of the courthouse. So, you know, electage is supposed to show up on this stuff, but we're going to be marching into Marysville, and it'll be a first opportunity to come out there and lock arms with all of us and have a great event. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next speaker?
Our last speaker is Tony Farley.
Tony?
Yeah, I'm here.
Great.
Tony Farley, South U.C. Waltz High Park. Thank you for your service, everybody. Thank you, Karen Baines, for your second election. I was part of that, hoping my birthday card for my birthday in March. Thank you, Mike Ziegemeyer, the Sarhaski versus Mahonkers, Richard Farley, and also Stephen Farmhouse. His pies are the bomb, dude. His pies, his pie to make those shop look terrible, his pies. And Dan Forrest, the Star Wars Darth Vader guy. Wonder Woman versus Darth Vader in the fight. Amazonian versus Darkseid. And Jeff Boone, I also call him Boomgarden, too. The new guy. Thank you. And Manny, hey, Manny. Thank you, Manny. If you're just a city council member. And thank you, Deputy, and the best sheriff in the West, Brandon Barnes. Brandon Barnes. And also, the city council members, the fire chief, also Wade, the council member. Also, thank you, the new patrol, right? Cesar. And thank you, Sarah Arrioz. And thank you, Stephanie McKinsey, the future mayor of 2026, in Marysville. And thank you, Sacramento Bee reporter, man. Sacramento Bee is a modern progressive newspaper. I like that Sacramento paper, man. And thank you, Donna. See tomorrow what the history of the oath. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Tony. Moving on now to the consent calendar. The consent calendar groups together those items which are considered non-controversial for which prior policy direction has been given to staff and that only require routine action by the board. The chair will advise the audience. The matters may be adopted in total or by one motion. However, the board may at its option, or upon request of a member of the public, consider any matter separately. We have, how many items for consent? Fifteen items for consent. We'll be pulling item number one, so actually, items 1 through 15 minus number one, so entertain a motion. Move to approve consent calendar 2 through 15.
Second.
Okay, we have a first by Supervisor Baines, second by Supervisor Ziegemeyer. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no opposition. Motion carries. Consent calendar carries. Thank you. Moving on to appearance items. Mr. Sorry. Oh, are we discussing one or holding one? Oh, discussing one. Okay, thanks. Sorry, out of practice. All right, here we go. So approval of the board committee assignments, item number one. Donna Johnson.
Thank you very much. We've got a few updates on the board committee assignments. We're going to add Supervisor Baines as a member, to and remove Supervisor Flores, you as a member of the North Central County Consortium. And then add Supervisor Baines as a member, to and remove Supervisor Ziegemeyer as a member from Feather River Air Quality Management District. And add Supervisor Ziegemeyer as an alternate to the Feather River Air Quality Management District, and remove Supervisor Boone as the alternate. Those are the proposed amendments.
Okay, do we have any discussion questions from the board?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. I have number one carries. Thank you, Donna. Moving on from the consent calendar, now we have appearance items, and we have CAO Steve Smith.
Approval to issue a written report for the interim ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on the cultivation of industrial hemp within the unincorporated areas of Sutter County.
Thank you, honorable chair and supervisors. So on December 14th, or sorry, December 17, 2024, the Board of Supervisors adopted interim urgency ordinance 1728 amending the Sutter County Code to repeal and replace Chapter 412 to impose a temporary moratorium on the cultivation of industrial hemp within the unincorporated areas of Sutter County by any persons or entity. That ordinance took effect immediately upon adoption and will expire on January 31, 2025, unless extended as provided by law. Government Code, Section 65-800, states that 10 days prior to the expiration of that interim ordinance, or any extension, the legislative body shall issue a written report describing the measures taken to alleviate the condition which led to the adoption of the ordinance. I have said report, which I'll read. It's fairly brief, shouldn't take too long. Immediately following the implementation of the urgency ordinance, number 1728, on December 17, 2024, Sutter County Department of Agriculture staff contacted all currently registered and licensed industrial hemp growers operating within the county to provide information on the moratorium and answer questions. Current registration with California Department of Food and Agriculture, hereafter, CDFA, and licensing with Sutter County, consists of six growers, 197.6 acres outdoor, and 67 hoop houses. All registrations and licenses are set to expire between January 28 and June 11, 2025. Four of the six registrants/licensees are currently on corrective action plans for violations of state laws or regulations. Since 2019, five registrations/licenses have been revoked for violations of state laws or regulations. Since 2019, the department has issued 23 notices of violation or abatement notices. Since 2019, the department has participated in three hearings or appeals to revocation actions. Pesticide use enforcement, two incidents of illegal pesticide use and pesticide residue on industrial hemp resulting in agricultural civil penalties and crop abatement. Enforcement action activities, including activities related to corrective action plans, are not reimbursable under the department's industrial hemp contract with CDFA or recoverable through direct billing to the registrant or licensee. The department's annual financial statements from 2019 through June 30, 2024 show $557,604 in expenditures and $141,777 in revenue, leading to a cumulative shortfall of just over $415,000 over that period. The department's shortfall from July 1 to 2024 to date will not be complete until the fiscal year ends. The department is currently holding two positions open due to a hiring freeze. This does not account for cost to county council, code enforcement, sheriff's office, or fire related to hemp cultivation. No currently registered or licensed growers have submitted planting reports indicating that they have completed planting a crop. The department is not aware of any industrial hemp currently being legally grown in the county. The department has had contact with several residents near industrial hemp cultivation sites since the urgency ordinance became effective. More time is needed to fully study and consider whether and to what extent the county's general plan, zoning and land use regulations, and health and safety regulations should be modified to accommodate and/or address the impacts of industrial hemp to best protect the health, safety, and welfare of county residents and visitors. That ends the written report. I would state included in the last, in the last staff report from December was also a letter from the Yuba-Sutter Farm Bureau commenting on supporting a ban on industrial hemp cultivation within the unincorporated areas of Sutter County. So that ends my report on this matter, and then happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure there may be some comments from the public as well.
Okay, thank you, CAO Smith. At this time, I'd ask the clerk if we have any comment cards?
We do. The first comment is Luke Wilson.
There you go.
All right, good afternoon, supervisors. Many of you know me, but for those of you who don't, my name is Luke Wilson, a proud second-generation farmer born here in Butte and Sutter Counties. I farmed kiwi fruit, plums, chestnuts, and in 2019 dove into the hemp farming business. I was appointed to CDFA's Industrial Hemp Advisory Board by Secretary Karen Ross back in 2020. I'm also an alumni of the California Ag Leadership Program, Class 44, as well as sit on the board of the Kiwi Fruit Administrative Committee for the Federal Marketing Order under the USDA. I'm proud to live and farm in this beautiful valley, and even more so that we're bringing money back from all over the world, back here to Sutter County to spread around here at home in Butte and Sutter County. Until recently, I was proud and grateful that we could establish this new business here in Sutter County. We started the business back in 2019, and like many other farmers in the area, bit off a little bit more than we could chew. Over the past six years, we've invested millions of dollars establishing our business here in Sutter County. We've spent those millions with local landowners, business owners, employees, and others. Local manufacturing businesses have also helped us develop custom equipment for this new specialty crop, not to mention we employ over 50 full-time local employees, occasionally ballooning to hundreds seasonally. I've given many of you guys tours, along with people like Assembly Member Gallagher and other elected officials, as well as USDA officials from DC. Our doors have always been open and welcoming to anyone who'd like to learn about this exciting new crop and the ins and outs of the industry. Knowing that this crop comes with a historical stigma, I have personally made it my mission to give this crop a good name and face coming out of prohibition. I knew that a segment of the local population has preconceived ideas about this crop, that we'd face some of the same challenges as the sister crop cannabis faces. This is why I've always had an open-door policy and engaging with as many of the public and communities I possibly can to educate people about the many benefits and economic opportunities of this crop. Being the largest registered hemp farmer in Sutter County, I can't help but feel extremely disappointed, and to be completely honest, offended that the county would, without notice, decide to ban the production of industrial hemp without ever reaching out to myself or any other registered hemp farmer in the county to see if we could collaboratively come up with solutions to the few issues that may have come up. I feel that Sutter County is making a huge mistake. We at my business are currently in the middle of negotiations with the three largest hemp processors in the county, with the intention of signing contracts for hundreds of acres worth millions of dollars. This money will be coming in from all around the globe. all coming right back here to Sutter County, being spread around to local businesses like NS Tractor, Sanders Irrigation, California Industrial Rubber, Circle R, Pape, Suico, Home Depot, local truck drivers, mechanics, tire shops, not to mention my employees, over fifty local residents who spend their money locally on rent, groceries, restaurants. Unfortunately, only a fraction will end up in my pockets. I ask you Supervisors, why would you want to halt such a strong economic driver? This new crop provides an invaluable opportunity for farmers like us, especially during these challenging marketing times by low commodity prices and high inflation. In closing, if the Board of Supervisors intends to proceed with a ban on hemp cultivation, despite the significant economic benefits it brings to Sutter County, I respectfully urge you to consider an alternative, a fee-based conditional use permit, with reasonable minimum requirements that could allow farmers the opportunity to comply while generating funds to support the Agriculture Commissioner's Office in regulating this commodity. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, are there any other comment cards?
Yes, our last speaker is Steve.
Steve, okay.
First of all, congratulations to the new Supervisors. You've bit off a lot, and I'll try not to make it any harder for you. I live in Sutter, I'm a retired Navy officer. We retired to Sutter looking for a small-town experience, and over the past seven years, we've been lucky enough to live it. It's a wonderful town, it's filled with wonderful people. We adjusted to ag life. We're not farmers, but we adjusted to living in an ag community with the dust from the sweepers and the spraying and the mechanical noise and all those sorts of things that come with living right on the edge of an orchard. We also came to appreciate probably the pride of Sutter, which is the high school. Not to talk down to the elementary school, but the high school is really the star of the show. And kind of turned the clock back thirty, forty, fifty years to when I was young and what it was like to grow up in California when things were simpler and maybe a little bit better. Any rate, the reason I'm coming here to talk about hemp is that a couple of years ago, a new crop arrived, and it was cannabis hemp, whatever you want to call it, it's the same plant, has the same problems. So for us, we worked with the Supervisors to devise an ordinance that would be respectful of people's right to farm, but also protect our community. Because the first go-around, when the plants were blooming, our high school smelled like dope, our neighborhoods smelled like dope, our clothing smelled like it, our dogs and cats smelled like it. One of the girls who worked for Recology went into work, and her boss pulled her aside and said, "Listen, you can't come to work this way." And she said, "What do you mean?" And he said, "Well, I smell the marijuana." And she's, "I don't smoke dope, no one I know smokes dope, my family doesn't do it." I live in Sutter. It was in her clothes. If you Google hemp smell problems, hemp cultivation problems with residential areas and towns, you will find hundreds of examples across the country. And they're becoming more and more plentiful as time goes on, where it hasn't been handled well. And it's a real problem. In addition to the smell, which is, it's not a week of sweeping or spraying, it's week after week, month after month, when the weather cools off and we're ready to throw our windows open for the nice California sleeping weather, we have to slam our windows shut, turn our air conditioners back on, and filter the air. And that goes on for months. It's not acceptable. We personally have the ability to leave. We don't want to, we love living in Sutter, we love the community, we can leave. And if this isn't handled, and we can't get a solution, we will. But how many people can do that? How many people want to do that? They live here, they're multi-generational, this is where they want to raise their families, their grandkids. They shouldn't have to leave for this problem. So I would ask you to seriously consider whatever options it takes to eliminate this problem for those of us who own homes, pay taxes, and reside in Sutter.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for any comments.
Through the chair.
Yes, Supervisor Baines?
So I've been contacted by some constituents, one representing, I guess Luke Wilson and some other folks that are members of our community, maybe growers or maybe not, but that have requested for our board to do two-two ones with them before taking any further action. So that'd be my request today, is to give them an opportunity to meet with the board before moving forward with the recommended action.
Okay, other comments?
Yes, we actually have two other comments, the first one is Justin.
To the chair, if I may, just briefly, is it, the action today is just to issue the report from the findings of, since the interim ordinance was put in place. So today, there's no direction to say anything in particular as far as
Banning hemp.
The length of the ban or whatever, though the next logical step at the next meeting would be an ordinance to discuss that. But I just wanted to make you aware that tonight, that isn't the action.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and I understand we have further comment cards?
Yes, Justin?
Justin, go ahead.
Thank you, Board, for having me tonight, I appreciate it, Steve, I appreciate your time. Good to see a few of you, some familiar faces, you know, Dan and Carm. Good to see you again, you know, Mike as well, and congratulations to the new appointees here. I'm a farmer from South Sutter County, I was born and raised in Sacramento, but I moved my family up here about ten years ago. Became a USDA certified organic vegetable farmer. I sell downtown at the X Street Farmers Market. You know, obviously, I think a handful of people in this room are farmers, and they understand the difficulties of farming, and especially, I'm a first-generation farmer, so it hasn't been easy to make a living out here. Definitely learned my lessons and got my butt kicked a little bit, but you know, we live and move forward. I've got two young boys, nine and eight years old, you know, we're residents here, we go to school here. And I just came to speak specifically about an aspect of our farm. We do organic vegetables, we grow specialty crops. I was awarded a specialty block grant, partner with the USDA multiple times on programs. I also was awarded the grant for this crop that we grow, the specialty block grant with UC Davis we partnered up with. So I'm not a marijuana farmer or just a hemp farmer, I'm just a farmer trying to make a living. And so, we also do sweet potatoes as well, as part of our thing. But my big thing is really community. I came to this county because I saw the opportunity to be able to work with an agriculture-based county, to be able to work with an agriculture-based county, and something where the bureaucracy was a little bit less, and they weren't just trying to pay houses over all of our valuable farmland. So I've really invested a lot of time. I've personally taken over half a million dollars worth of losses since 2019 operating hemp in this county. I'm not going to say that I was treated unfairly by the Agriculture Department, but one big thing that I see in your guys' budget, which I've been printing out your budgets for agriculture and by and large, and I see some of the financial difficulties that this county is in. And I think this is a real opportunity for us. Again, you know, I've lost more money, it seems like, than the county has, just personally. Not to speak for other people like Luke Wilson, who I think was your largest employer at one time in the county, over three hundred employees. But so I think there's some real good things that come with this. I understand the difficulty of smells and people doing illicit things that they're not supposed to. Personally, I've always been up and up. You know, it's unfortunate that the stance has been we should just ban this outright. I'd like an opportunity, maybe we create some sort of other programming process or investigation, you know, a process so you guys figure out who we really are as people, and try to support that. I mean, part of building an industry is you guys invest and we invest. We've invested ten times, taken ten times the amount of losses to build this industry, and all we're looking for is support and open line of communication. In your documentation here from your budgets, number one thing, one of the top priorities is transparency. And I don't feel like we've been really communicated with. We tried to have an ad hoc meeting before, there was no follow-up from the board. And so what I'd like to see is some follow-up, maybe we could work with your county administrator.
Thank you, thank you for your comment, time is up, so I just wanted to let you know.
Can I just, one last statement?
Real quickly, I'll give you ten more seconds.
I really appreciate that, man, thank you. And so, we just like communication, be able to gather some information, and be able to come back to that next meeting and really educate you on what we found out, make sure that it's clear that we're not losing more money, it's being reduced, and there's some real opportunity, like sustainable packaging and things like that, that I think are really necessary. So, thanks again for your time. I look forward to maybe communicating with Stephen, being able to have some conversation with him about some of the research. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our last speaker is JR Tiara.
Good afternoon, congratulations to Supervisor Boone and Supervisor Stevens for taking the dive in, and welcome back to you guys who are still here. Okay. I just wanted to share with you, I'm also a farmer in this community, farmed here since nineteen hundred and seven, my family, I should say. And the hemp industry was an opportunity for us, among many. Like my predecessor just spoke, I probably lost over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with all the ordinances and changes in the economy, and trying to learn this business and this new opportunity. But one of my perspectives here is, one, I wanted to reiterate that we did establish an ad hoc committee about two years ago, that somebody dropped the ball. I know that myself, Mr. Eve, we called Supervisors in the offices many times, and to resolve the issues that we're talking about, well, then wasn't financial, but now it's financial. Then was the smell, the odor, et cetera. So, if, my point is, if managing farming has become a burden on our agricultural department based on our county budget, and we are a fully, fully impacted, ground zero on up agricultural-based economy, that's our lifeblood. If you can't find a way to manage the agriculture practices of all farming practices that are donated, legal farming practices for business and the new future economic opportunities that hemp in itself has, to get rid of plastics, plastic pollution, we all know about microplastics and the pollution in the oceans, and we can make everything with hemp that's made in plastic. That technology is here, but we need a community that supports that. And with the fires that are going on down south, the thousands of acres that are burning, now to rebuild Southern California, the opportunity for us in this open-landed community of farming land to grow hemp and invite manufacturers and industrials to come in here and set up shop, because the regulations to rebuild those communities are not going to be the same. It's going to require recyclables, renewables, reusables, and that's going to even affect our community here. So the economic opportunity is awesome, especially considering the rock-bottom hit we hit with walnuts the last couple of years, and other commodities in farming. So, my point is, is that if we can't manage farming, whatever category it is, because of a budget, county budget, we might as well shut the doors down now. Close the county. Take a look around you, look around left and right. Farmer, 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 farmer-related farmer, a man who does business with farmers. You're not industrial techies, you're not computer geniuses, or not, I'm sorry, you know, engineers. You're not industrialists, you're not Silicon Valley gamers. You represent our community as farmers. And in this community and this state, we have a right to farm. That is a law, a statute, and ordinance. That is a right to farm, any commodity, any crop. If you open up the door here to stop hemp, you're opening up the door to destroy the future of all farming practices.
Let's wrap it up, Mr. Tiara, thank you. If you wrap it up.
If you can't manage hemp, you won't be able to manage the peach growers and manage their budgets and all those costs either. So you cannot isolate one industry, one category of the industry.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Mr. Tiara. Okay, I'll bring it back now to the board for further comments.
Through the chair.
Yes, Supervisor Ziegemeyer.
You know, I heard that same pitch four years ago, I still haven't seen it, all right? In my business, I build equipment. If I'm losing money on a piece of equipment, I quit building that piece of equipment. All right, we've talked about a loss of over four hundred thousand over the last four years. I'm curious, I'm willing to sit down with all of you guys and hear you out. That's what I'm elected to do, to hear you out. I'll spend all day with you, hearing you out. But I want to see how you're going to make them tie up. Here's the one thing I get, throughout the day, throughout the evening, I get the phone calls of the smell, all right? I spend a lot, I love my community. So I'm all over the community, whether it's Thursday, Friday night at a freshman varsity football game, or Tuesday, Thursday night at a volleyball game or basketball game. And when I'm wearing my Sutter County Supervisor jacket, which I'm proud to wear, people ask me, "What is that goddamn awful smell around here? Where is that coming from?" And I said, "Well, it's over there, and it's over there." And they said, "My gosh, this is horrible." When the athletes run up to the water tower, which we've done a long, long time ago, they run up and go up down the water tower, same thing on the pass road and so forth, back and forth, and everyone throughout the community, I love to do it with my family. And you see broken pieces of hemp all over the place. On the walking trail, I'm thinking, "Well, how'd that get there, and why?" I just don't understand. So that's going to be one of my questions I'd like you to have the answer to when we sit down and talk, is, why would people be stealing a hemp plant? Are they going to take those hemp plants, go home and crank out that oil or whatever, and whatever? I'm just curious, because it doesn't make any sense to me. Investigations, who's going to pay for the investigations? All right? So right now, as we talk, we have three sheriff deputies patrolling around Sutter County, possibly four, three. Someone gets pulled over off Regal Road, and they run their license plate, and they're a bad guy, they're over there backing them up. That means it's a free-for-all. So something happens, some bad people, whatever, come in and see this hemp along the field, and they might think, "Man, that looks like marijuana." Without knowing the difference, and they go in there and someone just gets in something bad or whatever. Well, we got our guys over there off Regal Road, so it's going to take them time to get back over here. I'm just looking out for the community. That's what I was elected to do, but I was elected to look out for you as well. And that's why I'm willing to sit down and hear both sides of the story. But it's really tough, because I get those phone calls, whether it's one o'clock in the afternoon, or twelve-thirty in the morning. I get those phone calls. And I just, I don't understand. And I know that harvesting goes on throughout the night for tomatoes, you'll see the lights going on, you know what I mean, through the sarno guns and so forth, keeping the ducks off the rice and so forth. So agriculture is agriculture. I respect agriculture, that's our bread and butter here. And, but like I said, people, they want to, you know, they're curious to see how you can help remedy those situations. If you came in with a plan, I could almost guarantee you the people that are against it would probably listen and say, "Wow, that's not a bad plan." If that would actually work to fruition, if we're getting paid off here, you know, investigations are getting taken care of, you know, so we're not losing money. The ag department is not losing hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, so we can't pull in other people to come in and work. But, like I said, you name the time and the place, I'll meet with you, and we'll sit down and we'll talk. And I recommend you do the same thing with my other colleagues here, and let's figure it out, because right now, it's not working, as far as I'm concerned, but that is my opinion. I have four other colleagues up here along with me, and I work for the people, elected by the people, so I'll hear you out, and love to hear you.
Thank you, Supervisor, do you have other comments, Supervisor Stevens?
Through the chair.
Yes.
You know, with me just now coming into it and listening to, I've gotten calls on the other side, or both sides, actually. So, in my view, Sutter County kind of let the bag, the cat out of the bag a few years ago when we took on this proposal. And by doing so, growers, hearing what I'm hearing, invested quite a bit of money in gearing up to grow hemp. So that is one aspect that's really not so good, that they had to invest that money to grow that hemp, and now we have issues. I would really like to hear both sides, and I don't know where we're going from here, if we're going to have a committee, or I'm not really following where we're supposed to go at this point. But this is an issue that should be resolved, and I understand the smelling part of it, and that's not appropriate. I'd like to hear from Sheriff Barnes also. By one of my phone calls, I understand there's quite a bit of illegal activity going on out in the fields and stuff, and I don't know if that's actually true or not, but maybe he could inform me of what is taking place.
Sheriff Barnes, did you want to make some comments, or did you want to wait?
And just a reminder for the Supervisors, this is related to just receiving a written report for the interim ordinance, so it's not the actual ordinance. So at this point, it would be a receiving report, which would then give us time to also meet with the hemp farmers as well.
Yeah, so I didn't bring any stats, because I wasn't anticipating speaking, but I do provide those to our ag commissioner. I will tell you, very early on when the ordinance was enacted, the calls for service were much higher. We actually did have some relatively violent crimes in a couple of the particular grow areas. People assuming it was marijuana, I think, like Supervisor Ziegemeyer had pointed out. Most recently, those calls have been reduced, and so we haven't felt a significant impact recently. I think, I don't know if Lisa brought them, but I think within the last year there were only a few calls directly related to hemp grows.
Thank you, Sheriff. Did you have any other questions, Supervisor Stevens?
So right now, we're
So right now, we're going to entertain a motion. There is a potential motion on the floor that Supervisor Baines put out. He hasn't actually formalized that motion yet. But before we formalize a motion, I want to see if Supervisor Boone has any comments. Okay, so at this time, we'll formalize a motion, if I could.
Through the chair.
Yes.
So I'd make a recommendation that we, we table this item 16 for right now until we actually have an opportunity to meet with these individuals and do two-two ones and gather information, again, from the Sheriff's Department, the Ag Department, County Council, and whoever else need be. So that'd be my recommendation to move this to a further meeting.
So in form of a motion, is there, can we set a time limit on that?
Next board meeting.
Okay. Counsel, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to explain that this is just the issuing of a report. We have a temporary moratorium that went into place. It's in place for 45 days. At the next board meeting, that's when the decision will be made whether we're going to extend the ordinance or not. At that time, what you could do is you can make changes to the ordinance and either adopt it or not adopt it. So in order to keep the door opened to continue it at the next one, the board would need to approve this, this report, and then, then it leaves the door open for various different things that could be done at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel. Supervisor Baines, do you wish to amend your proposal, or would you like to remain?
I'd remain the way it was proposed.
Okay. Do we have a second to the motion?
Through the chair. I mean, more or less, it means the same. We're talking about this. It's going to be on the next agenda.
Sorry, Supervisor.
There would be a delay, right?
I missed the full motion. Can it be repeated?
Supervisor Baines, if you could repeat the motion and put a time limit on it.
Request was to stop any action until the two-two ones take place.
So just to clarify, if this written report is an issued further recommendation, then essentially, the moratorium ends.
Yes. It will end at the end of the 45 days.
And, and there's not an option to renew it at that point, because part of the approval process is to issue a written report 10 days, at least 10 days before, and we're well before that, the end of the temporary. So what I'm saying is, your action is perfectly legal and acceptable, as far as I know. But I just want you to be aware that if that action is taken without approving this written report, then essentially, moving forward, you'd be starting fresh again and possibly at some point doing an interim ordinance. Anything that's done to this point, including the current ban, once that interim moratorium ends on January 31st, regardless of what you discuss, maybe over the next couple of weeks or at the next meeting, if this isn't approved, then the moratorium ends.
About through the chair?
And you can't, you can't then just extend it, sorry.
So if we make, if Supervisor Baines just makes a motion to approve the written report, we all get to do our two-two ones still and meet with growers and everyone throughout the community who wants to set up meetings. And now we're all educated on the issue throughout the growers and everyone else, and we're ready to bring it back up at the next meeting or meeting after that.
What would be the time limit on that to meet, having the two-two ones, if this motion were to pass? Not his, Supervisor Baines' motion, but the recommended action.
Really, there would be no, nothing official on there. You would just want to have those meetings before the next board meeting in two weeks, so that all of you would be informed and have heard all the information from, from folks on both sides.
Okay. Thank you for the comments. We do have a motion on the floor. I don't believe we have a second, so the motion fails. Is there another motion?
Make a motion to approve the, to issue a written report.
Okay.
I second.
Okay. First by Supervisor Ziegemeyer, second by Supervisor Stevens. If I could call for a roll, call vote, please.
Supervisor Boone? Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. And growers, we're going to try to attempt to set up some appointments with you here within the next couple of weeks, so.
Through the chair, please. Get our clerk of the boards your phone numbers, please. Get all the information to the clerk of the, clerk of the boards, please. Do not forget.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Sorry, the comment time's over, but you can, you can get an inquiry out to CAO Smith. Yeah, just contact CAO Smith. Thank you. Okay, let's move on now to correspondence. Any questions on correspondence? Okay. There being none, we move to district reports by the Board of Supervisors. We'll start with Supervisor Ziegemeyer.
Well, it's been an incredible week of, I should say, month of high school sports. You get out there, high school basketball's going on right now, men and women, so a lot of great games, really fun to watch. We have travel volleyball, Supervisor Baines and myself, we had our daughters out there. They did a great job this past weekend, and I believe we have this weekend as well. So for all you parents of travel ball parents, I feel for you. It's a lot of work, but it's worth it. The kids are having fun, enjoying themselves. I want to close, I would like to do a plaque from the county, I'm sure we're all behind this, for Juan Iridia and his wife of Angels Recovery Dive Team, to present that to them at their next meeting. Want to close in memory of Brock E. Smith, oh, Brock's Ice Cream. Man, my dad used to pick us up from school very rarely and take us to Brock's Ice Cream. And that was the very, that was my favorite memory, because my dad got sick when we were 14, so it was like, I remember, I mean, this is, I remember the last trip, we had to pull his driver's license away, was coming home from Brock's Ice Cream. I said, Dad, Mom's going to have to drive now.
Love this.
But I love Brock's Ice Cream, still love it, still my favorite place, so. Awesome guy. And close in memory of Arnold Hoferd. Wow. Hoferd Family Farms, Triple H. Arnold was the sweetest guy ever, just the nicest guy. I'm going to miss him dearly. Close in memory of him as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Stevens?
None at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Baines?
Yes. Letters of sympathy and condolences sent to the families of President Jimmy Carter, Dr. Manmon Singh, Om Prakash Tala, Kathy Jordan, Jag Paul Singh Doddly, Jaginder Core Dollywall, and also like to be added to the letter sent to Arnold Hoferd's family as well. And one other request would be to add a photo of our Board of Supervisors in that lobby.
Into the lobby, you said?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Boone?
I just want to tell everybody that it's been a great experience to be part of this Sutter County Board of Supervisors. They approved Jeff and I to attend an event in Pasadena, the CSAC Conference, which was really eye-opening, and we really had a really good time there. And we were able to find a couple of programs that we're going to implement here in our community, and Sarah's been back there working on it hard, and things are looking up. I'm here to tell you right now, we got a lot of things in the pipeline, and it's coming. So sit tight, bear with us. 2025's a year. We're going to make it happen.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor, and welcome, welcome to the team. All right? CAO Smith, did you have comment?
I just wanted to mention and welcome the new supervisors, and of course, let the public know, even though this is their first meeting, they've been working hard behind the scenes. And yeah, I think, was that November when we were in Pasadena? They were at every meeting and very attentive and working hard, and I get a lot of calls and questions and happy to answer, and we've set up meetings ongoing with department heads. So even before they were in office, they were able to meet and ask questions and learn about, a lot about Sutter County government and all the various different functions. So I just wanted to thank them for being so studious and for allowing us to answer questions and working with us, and look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I'd like to add my name, please, to Brock Smith's condolence letter and also Hoferd's condolence letter. And then I'd like to have a plaque or recommendation for Mandy Jones, or a plaque recognizing her work with Happy Landings, so we can call her to the board. That'd be great. At this point, I'd entertain a motion to accept the considerations and sympathies.
Through the chair. I'd like to be added to Kathy Jordan's as well, too, please.
Okay. Make sure.
And I'll make a second.
Did you get that, clerk? Okay, thank you. And we have a first by-
I'd be added to the Brock's.
I want to be added, too.
It'll cost you a date to Brock's. I didn't know we had to ask.
I'd be added to Carter's. Okay. All right. All right, we'll keep going all night. It's funny, because we all are added to all the letters, so it's great.
Through the chair. Wait till we get to, I'd like to amend, amend the motion.
To be added to a letter, yeah. Okay. Little humor for the night, that's great. Just to wrap it up, I just want to say-
I have a question for Counsel.
Yeah.
But can we, for item, the item that was taken before that, on the hemp deal, that can I take that, can I bring that back to, to clarify my vote?
Well, the matter is passed. It would be reconsideration.
Can we bring it back for reconsideration?
That would be a reconsideration.
We bring it back for reconsideration and a vote?
So just a point of order, Counsel. So if we're bringing back for reconsideration, don't we have to vote to be able to bring it back to reconsideration?
We have, we would have to vote, and it would be at the next meeting.
Okay. Is that your intention?
No.
Okay.
My intention was to stick with the, obviously, I was very clear on my position in the item that was being discussed, and I wanted to, I wanted my vote to, to-
To go no? You want to say nay? Can he retract his vote and say nay to the vote at this point, since the meeting's still open, or is that reconsideration?
The matter is resolved at this point.
Okay.